We're going to go ahead and call this baby daughter. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everybody, we're glad to have you here tonight, to everybody that's watching us on livestream and Facebook. Go ahead and entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Consent agenda, all items on a consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda and considered normal sequence. For tonight, we have the city council minutes from April twenty-second, twenty nineteen, the resolution approving disbursements through May thirteenth, twenty nineteen, Minnesota Department of Transportation Airport Maintenance and Operations Grant Contract Approval and Farm Lease Approval. Is there any discussion regarding the consent agenda? All in favor? Can I get a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we now move on to our public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person, persons wishing to make a comment must sign up in advance of the meeting on the sheet provided and identify themselves by providing a name and address. Do we have anybody, city clerk, in regards to tonight? Is there anybody from the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, can I get a motion to go ahead and post the public comment portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried, we now move on to our regular agenda, the first item on the docket is six alpha, which the sewer metals two items, city council's great approval.
Mayor Hague, members of city council, before you, you'll see that there are three items, I'll go through each one of them individually and talk about the ramifications of each one on the other and how those impacts are all related. But this is really for a site that we've talked about, we've been talking about this for almost a year. It's a, it's a site right at, off of Turtle Street, four twenty-nine Turtle Street, it's five point nine three acres. That site that is currently developed has forty units on it. This proposal, there's three things, there's a rezoning ordinance that we need to perform a reading on, there's a CUP which allows for a PUD. I'll talk about that in more detail as we get to that, and then there's a preliminary plat as well for the site. So, and so this proposed project site will have thirty-nine units on it. One thing, and I'll talk about this probably in the most detail, the rezoning ordinance that we have is essentially cleaning the site up. If you look at our current zoning map, there's a line that is drawn outside of what we would consider normal boundaries, normally they, they follow parcel lines. The zoning map that we currently have in our zoning ordinance was adopted, and we have this line, this split between R three and R four on this parcel that, that is essentially being cleaned up with this ordinance. And then also, as a note, following the comprehensive plan, this area is designated as live. So, again, fairly broad, but this, this area has been designated to have people live in it. So, there's been a process with this, so our council representative, council member Progman, he is the representative on the planning commission. There was a planning commission review. At the planning commission, they recommended approval of the rezoning of that parcel to be all R four. They are recommending the CUP which allows for the PUD, the CUP, conditional use permit, PUD, planned unit development, a lot of acronyms here. They're recommending the approval of that, and they're recommending the approval of the preliminary plat. The latter two, the planned unit, there are the CUP and PUD and the preliminary plat are done via resolution. The rezoning is done via ordinance, and there will be a first and a second reading for that. One thing of note, one question that came up through the review of the packet by city council was, can we do the, the CUP, PUD and the preliminary plat? Being that the rezoning hasn't, won't technically have occurred until if approved on the twentieth of May. And the answer is yes, we've discussed this with the planner, Nate Sparks, and he's indicated that because if, if there would be any sort of structures being built on that area that's being rezoned, then yes, we would have to wait, but because there are no structures and the, and the PUD actually doesn't relate to that area that's, that's currently R three, which I'll talk about in a little bit, in a little bit here, we can, we can do that and everything is, is kosher to, to proceed. So, one condition that the planning commission came up with was that the applicant meet all engineering requirements prior to submission of the final plat. So, at some point in time in the near future, you will see a, a final plat, and when we bring that to city council, you know that we will follow this commit, this condition and, and we'll work with our city engineer and how the bond will work with them and their engineer to make sure that everything meets the, the needs of the engineering on the site. So, the requested actions, the first one, and we'll, we'll talk about them individually. First reading of the rezoning ordinance, the second is a resolution for the approval of a conditional use permit for the planned unit development. So the way our zoning code is written right now, we have to do a CUP in order to allow for a PUD. There, this is getting cleaned up through this rezoning or this zoning code amendment that the planning commission's also working on, but this is what we have in front of us, so it's a little, it's, it's, it's not the, the traditional way of handling this, but yeah, this is what we have to do in order to move this forward. And then the preliminary plat approval, and that's via resolution. So, for the first item is the rezoning, so this would be the first reading of the rezoning ordinance which is attached in the packet. This would zone the entirety of that parcel and, I got my pointer ready to go, I'll show you what's going on here. Let's see, so you can see the kind of blue and you can see the, oh, let me go back now. You can see the blue and the kind of purple-ish color, like right in this area, you'll see, this, this line kind of goes right through the parcel. The, the left-hand side of the parcel is zoned R three, the right is zoned R four. So what this ordinance essentially does is zone that entire parcel to be R four, which essentially cleans it up for the city. Again, there's no construction that's being proposed building-wise that's going to be in this rezone. So it's, it's separate but related because we're talking about this parcel. So, the action requested for this is to read the ordinance or waive the first reading of the attached ordinance. If that's the case, then the recommendation would be to direct staff to conduct the second reading of the ordinance and, and possibly adopt the ordinance at the May twenty-eighth meeting. I'll go through the next two items and we can go back and, and talk about them individually. So, the second item is conditional use permit resolution, so you'll see that in the packet as well. This was recommended for approval by this, by the planning commission. The resolution approves the conditional use permit that allows for the planned unit development. So following our planning or zoning code, that's the, that's the process that we have to undertake, and that is resolution R twenty nineteen dash zero one one. And for that is, the action requested is to consider approval of that resolution. The third and final action that's being requested is the preliminary plat resolution. And again, this was recommended for approval by the, by the planning commission. The resolution approves the preliminary plat. The final plat will need to be approved by the city council, we'll work through all the engineering questions and comments before that actually comes to the city council. And essentially, this resolution is indicating to the developer that we will allow the development on, of property on one site. So, and that is resolution R twenty nineteen dash zero one two, and, and the action requested is to consider approval of that resolution. So with that, I'll go back to the rezone ordinance, I've been directed from our planner to go in this order, so I'll entertain any questions about any of these items from council.
Any questions for any of the members of city council or our city administrator?
Are we only talking about the first one?
First one, let's have each one at a time.
Thank you.
The first reading of the rezoning ordinance. Any questions? With no questions, I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of the rezoning ordinance. Zones the entire property R four to allow the PUD to be established.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's carried. We're going to the second one now. Any questions for our city administrator regarding the conditional use permit resolution? Can I get a motion to go ahead and approve the conditional, consider the approval of resolution R twenty nineteen dash zero one one?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second, to be clear, we're approving the resolution.
That's correct. Any additional discussion? Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We now move on to the third action required, this is the preliminary plat, uh, plat resolution. Any questions for our city administrator on this?
Just to be clear, Mr. Krugel, this is only a preliminary approval, we will have a final plat, and that will take care of one of the issues raised by the planning commission, correct?
That is correct, generally, a preliminary plat is good for six months. So it kind of gives us a timeline to work with the developer to go get through some of those issues and, and exactly write those issues that were brought up by the planning commission to be addressed.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve resolution R twenty nineteen dash zero one two, the preliminary plat resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just a simple note for the public and the council. This is significant staff for our community in terms of providing affordable housing, so it's good that we're able to move forward at this point, we'll see what happens as we get to the final votes.
Yeah, just so everybody in the public knows, the proposal is to add two additional eight-unit buildings and two multifamily structures that have eleven and twelve units. The project proposes thirty-nine units on about the six acres. So that's basically what we're looking at doing here, so yes, it's going to certainly help with our housing problems that we have here in the city of the sewer. We now move on to item six Bravo, which is our twenty nineteen quarter one financial report, city council's their approval.
Mayor, meeting members of city council, this is officially, I think, your first financial report while having a full-time finance director. So, you'll notice there's been some change, format changes, I think that there's, to me, I was, I was happy with some of the new graphs that we have. They're easier to understand than some of the other ones that I've seen, so yeah, with that, I'll turn it over to Finance Director Dow.
Director Dow, welcome.
Welcome, thank you very much, Mayor Hague and members of city council, having me tonight. Happy to be on for the first time as a full-time finance director, so. We'll go through this quickly, if you have any questions, stop me on the slide so we can talk about it, so we know which slide we're talking about, but. This is the general fund cash balance slide, so we've done this in the past before with AEM, and I kind of, I kept with it just because it's kind of a nice little graph to show where our cash balances are typically at over the past three to four years and where they are currently. Our current spot is where the purple line is at, so it's in March there, just below the eight hundred thousand dollar line. We're on track, there's like typical cash flows for us, we go down first half of the year till we get our LGA and our first half tax settlement. That happens sometime between May, end of May and beginning of July, and then those go up in July, and then we go back down again through the rest, second half of the year till we get our second half in November and December. So, on a typical curve, which is like normal, something to be concerned about there. But what I did want to note is that we haven't changed our cash balance, more than a hundred and twenty-five dollars either up or down in total over the past four years. So I think that shows a lot of stability within the, within the community of knowing exactly where our fund balances is going to be at, where our cash balances are, what to spend, when we can spend it, so on and so forth, so it shows a lot of stability within the community and within the fund, so.
Director Dow, before we move on, there are two, there are two items, even though you have footnotes on five different things, the two that I'm about to bring up are the accounting for the two hundred and twenty-nine point four percent and the insurance for one ninety-eight point eight percent. I understand what the reasons are, but maybe for the benefit of the best of council, for those that are in attendance, maybe you might want to explain why we're at, where we're at right now.
Can you go to the next slide? Mr. Krugel, please, thank you. So what he's, what he is discussing about is item number three, which is twenty thousand dollars over budget, and number five, which is eighteen thousand dollars over budget so far through the year. So honestly, explaining insurance one, that's much easier than the accounting one, so insurance one has to do with the fact that we make a one-time payment for workers' comp during the year. So, an overall budget for the year is allocated in four quarters, but we budget on an annual basis here in the city, we don't budget quarterly. So if I had to, I would have budgeted the entire work comp amount in Q one, because that's when we pay that. But it will, it will flatten out over the year as we don't pay that anymore. We may have a small payment at the beginning of twenty twenty for any small things that go back and forth, how much we paid for work comp, how much we paid out in work comp claims during the year, but other than that, we won't have any other expenses for work comp.
Common practice would be that we pay it annually as opposed to every quarter?
Correct, yeah, just the, the payment isn't enough to substantiate us to pay it quarterly or even half a year. It's only about sixty thousand dollars, and then we allocate those across the funds, so it's only about eighteen grand for the general fund alone. The accounting one has to do with the fact that we are, we paid AEM for a few months, which is about, causing us about a ten thousand dollar over budget there. And then we also had a pre- audit expense that we paid, so we pay those, we pay a preliminary amount of, I think it's like five thousand dollars, which is all part of the general fund. And then we pay a secondary one after the audit's finished, which we just got finished up two weeks ago, and we paid, I got that, I don't know if it's in this packet or if it's going to be the next one, it's a twenty thousand dollar invoice from them, so that'll be allocated across the funds as well. So you'll see that expense either on this one or the next following twenty eighth meeting, so. Other than that, it's, it's, it's typical where we're at for accounting as well. You know, we always pay those expenses pre- audit right away in the year, and then we don't pay them the rest of the year either, so that should, that should flatten out, just like the insurance expense. Number one and number two are related to timing, or at least number ones are intergovernmental taxes, we don't get those till June, July each time. Number two has to do with the fact that we have more revenues, we got a reimbursement, so what, basically what happens is, we pay, since we own the property that the hospital's on, we pay the taxes for that, and then we have to invoice them back. So that has to do with two and four, those offset each other, we take those two out, they.
Yeah, reimbursement from the hospital comes in fourth quarter, if I recall.
I invoice them already, so hopefully they pay us ASAP and everything as yet, but I'm hoping sooner than later. But other than that, most has to do with timing of payments, like I said, with number three, number five. Other than that, it's just timing, when we get our tax, when we get our tax dollars, but overall, within the fund, I think we're doing really well for where we're at so far. Overall cash balances, I don't have any huge notes here, there was lots of notes that I could, that I made just based on timing and what had, what's happening within the fund and what's happening within each fund. The main things that I noted, basically the fact that we closed out a lot of funds last year, just trying to make it for easier accounting, hopefully that will shorten this graph up so you can make it a little bigger, so I can, so you can actually see the numbers, but. To get all the funds in there, you guess quite a few, so we closed a few last year, three or four of those. We also did some, made the purchases last year, so we have the six oh two fund, which is down about a hundred and seventy-two grand, and then the six oh four fund, which is down about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have made significant purchases in both of those, the six oh two fund was the purchase of the land next to the wastewater plant, which we got reimbursed for in twenty nineteen by Murph Buck. So those are just, it's down for now, but then we got reimbursed for those dollars. And then the six oh four fund has to do with the boring machine that we bought, which is about two hundred and fifteen, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars alone, so. Significant purchases in those two funds for those cash balances, but they should be able to come back up with our plans for utilities and, and the reimbursement from Murph Buck, so. Any other questions on any other funds? There's a lot of them here, so I don't want to go into too much detail. I'm going to skip over to page five and six, but five and six are basically showing you is where we have our cash. We only have one CD, and the rest is in either a savings account or a money market account, which is with four M. So, five and six basically just break down those and where those are at. If you have questions on those, let me know, I didn't put a picture up on the screen because it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to anybody to look at the numbers, give nothing to allocate it to. But I want to touch upon the water fund, so these are the graphs that I kind of made new or kind of used, but I previously had at AEM, but I made it a little better, I feel. What I'm concentrating on mostly is the bottom right, on each one of these next four slides, I have a graph on the bottom right, and that, what that graph shows is where our cash balances or where our revenues are at, which is where the line's at. And the bar is where our expenses are at. So what I like to do is go by year, the previous graph I showed you just showed you sales. If you compare sales to sales, you're not really comparing anything, because you don't know where your expenses are at. So I added the expense line there, showing us where our cash balances are at. As you can see, with water, we're making money every year and have been making money every year, which is a great thing for that fund, because we have a lot of expenses in that fund as well, we have some inter-fund loans that we have to pay back still. We still have some other expenses that are looming that we know, the one-twelve turnback project and such, and so having a healthy fund and having healthy cash flow in that fund is going to help in the future. Hopefully reduce some of those water utility increases that we're not hoping to have as many or have very little ones when we get a big project come up, so. Having any healthy balances is very good, so. I think they like this graph, this one's really nice. The blue line on the top bar is depreciation, so if we're covering depreciation, we're able to cover all those expenses if we need to replace something. As you can see, in twenty sixteen, we didn't cover depreciation, but we have since then, which is fantastic. It's also cutting down expenses as well, as you can see, those dropped quite a bit in the next couple of years. The orange, orange line is bond principal, so if we can cover the bond principal amount, is we can cover our bond payments, and the dark orange line is just our expenditures overall.
Zach, if I may?
Yes.
In twenty nineteen?
Yes.
With that low amount, is that for the entire year or is that to date?
Yeah, that's to date, so what I want to show is where we're at to date and not projections, because if I do projections, it's going to show either a really high number or a really low number, and then I don't want to scare anybody off, but.
We don't want to be fooled by that small number.
No, that small number will go up as the year goes on, which I sure hope so on both sides, sales and expenditures.
Thank you.
Yes. And next, we'll do the sewer fund, same thing again. Sewer fund, however, is not as healthy as the water fund is, as you can tell. So, again, the top line or top bar is depreciation. I put these in order based on the fact that of what we need to pay right away. Basically, the bottom line is current expenditures, which is yellow, the middle line will always be bond principal, which is covering the bond payment. The top one will always be depreciation, and the reason why I do that is because depreciation isn't the cash, we don't actually pay any cash off for that, so if our line isn't above depreciation, it's not like we're losing money every year, or it's not going to be able to cover that depreciation amount. Versus if we can't cover the green amount, which is the current situation in sewer, we're actually losing money every year paying just our bond principal back. So it's very concerning to me, I did some research on it, and mostly, most of it has to do with the fact that our sewer sales are based on water sales, and we don't have water from our Vegas water user in town. So, as most people know, that Agri-Pure is part of Murph Buck and part cost allocation from Murph Buck, so we do not charge them sewer at all, and they are our largest water user by far. So that hurts this fund a lot, telling them we can't charge sewer or Vegas water user. But, that may cause some things, hopefully, it looks like it's better so far. We obviously haven't made that nine hundred and, or million dollar payment to bond principal and interest, so we'll be doing in August. So, in third quarter, we'll talk again and see how, hopefully, it looks much better, but we'll see. Electric, this one's really difficult to see, because a small change in line is like a huge number, but normally, we have one nine or nine and a half million dollars in expenditures in this fund. So a small little change on the graph means quite a bit of dollars, actually. So the, the overall trend is that we're staying pretty consistent overall. Sales have dropped a little bit in twenty eighteen from twenty seventeen, although they were consistent from twenty sixteen, but they dropped a little bit based on just billings and what we could get out and the revenues that we were able to get out of electric revenue this year. They're down about three hundred thousand, that we determined Jasper, about three hundred thousand dollars, so. We're looking at the issues, but it looks like it's much better in twenty nineteen, we're hoping it's just timing of payments and when people gave their, paid their bills or whatever, but. I'm not overall concerned about the pro, overall about the fund, but it is something to be, we're watching it much closer now, knowing that those final numbers came in for twenty eighteen, so.
Director Dow, if we have utility payments or utility accounts that are delinquent, we send those off at the end of the year to get paid.
Yes.
Is that money that's re-pulled back into these funds then, or is it going to another fund?
Nope, it goes directly into these funds, so the one fund, so what happened is that all the funds get reimbursed, so we send the utility assessments off to the county. All of the other funds get reimbursed, the one for the government is, is electric, because they have the largest cash balance and the largest revenue source. So we do not reimburse them until we get the money back in. So that will hurt this fund, is what we do, is we pull the money out of, out of the electric fund and give it to the other funds, the water and the sewer and refuse and stormwater. And then as we get those assessment dollars back in, they go against and help and put it back into six oh four, the electric fund. The electric fund is kind of the holder of all the assessment dollars, so if somebody doesn't pay their assessment, the electric fund is the one that gets hurt by it. Although we haven't had a too large of a balance, but that's how it works in the accounting world, it's, one fund has to be the holder, and this city designated electric fund years ago, so.
So regarding our three different enterprise funds, just to be clear, after crunching the numbers after the first quarter, we're looking okay now?
Yes, as you can see, electric revenue was much better than, you know, was last year, I'd say. If I allocated it out again, I think we'd, we'd be right at the same line, if not a little higher than we were last year. With the electric rate increases as well, those helped significantly, as you can see, the line is significantly higher than the bar of where the expenditures are. I would expect it to be, if in past years, I would expect it to be a little closer, but with those increases in rates, it's actually helped our cash flow, which is good, based on the fact that we lost about, you know, three hundred thousand dollars in revenue last year, and then our cash balance is down that five hundred thousand dollar amount, which is the three hundred plus the boring machine of two, two twenties, so.
And then clear, we're, we're okay after the first quarter, the forecast, if the remaining three quarters will be there?
We should be fine, as long as we don't have any major expenses in this one, again. On the next one, community center? This one's difficult, because there's no depreciation, there's no bond principal on the community center, it's just revenues overall and where they are with expenditures, so. It says total cash flow overall, so all revenues and all expenditures taken into consideration. As you can see, twenty eighteen was a rough year for us, we had some big expenses that we had. We had some major repairs that we had to do in twenty eighteen, but twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, we looked like we just about broke even. So far in twenty nineteen, we've had one major expenditure, is that water leak or water main break, which significantly hurt the fund, which is, that whole fifteen thousand dollar repair maintenance basically item. It was a significant expense, I think it was like twenty, twenty-one thousand dollars. But, I'm, again, I'm hoping that doesn't happen anymore, and then those, the top of the line can be close to the top of the bar.
See if that's great approval.
If I may, in twenty eighteen, keep in mind, we did, we did purchase a Zamboni as well, which is a, a large. If you look at the difference between seventeen and eighteen, you know, that was, I believe it was, you remember what the, that expenditure was?
Five hundred thirty.
Thirty-five thousand dollars.
Somewhere in there.
That's built into that expenditures for twenty eighteen, and that was just a cash balance payment for that item, so. We won't have anything like that in the foreseeable future as far as the Zamboni goes.
So the charges for service were about twenty-four K, might be the first quarter. Is that, maybe you can give us an update regarding the memberships now that we've changed the various tiers?
So I, I have preliminary numbers, I haven't seen anything like a report or something that I've been looking for, but I think it'd be a good, good thing to bring forward to council to kind of give an update on where we're at as far as memberships go and, and things that are happening at the community center. From what I understand, we've gotten some new memberships, we've, we've lost very few with these changes, which is expected, that, but one thing that I've found is that if I go through and explain the different tiers and the kind of à la carte way that we, we have memberships now, people generally like it, they like having the option to, to do it. We've gotten some feedback, and we'll talk about this during the budget process. We've gotten some feedback and we'll talk about this during the budget process about, you know, why is the gym a top tier facility? Well, you know, why isn't there a separate item just to use the gym? Well, they could draw a line somewhere in there. Um, you know, I'm not opposed to changing those at some point in time. Uh, but, um, you know, we've received generally pretty good feedback as far as the memberships go. So, I don't think we've lost. I, I, I think we have a net increase, um, but I don't have those exact numbers.
Well, maybe we could go ahead and task staff to perhaps have those numbers available for us maybe within the next couple of months so we can kind of see where we're at. Don't, don't rush on that.
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll get something. I think it's good because there's, there's a lot of stuff going on at the community center. You guys will see, uh, something coming forward regarding the, the, um, potential wall between the fitness area and the gym and talking about that. Um, I know that there was some interest in what that would look like and the design standards and, and whatnot. So, that might be a good time and that might be coming up here in either the last meeting or the next meeting in, in May or the first meeting in June. So, we'll try to, try to get it, maybe have a, a community center, um, themed council meeting.
I have a question here.
Yeah, if you remember, quote, quote.
As we are upgrading the equipment in the fitness area, that's not showing up here. Am I correct? That shows up in CIP, CEP?
Correct.
Correct, uh, if I may. So, with the, with the fitness equipment itself, what that is and, and if you remember, it's a three-year lease that was approved at seventy-two thousand dollars a year. Um, you'll actually see that our first payment is due in 2020. So, that'll look, that'll be added to the expenditures in, in 2020, not 2019.
Okay. But it's coming out of these figures here then?
It is. So, it'll, it'll be added to the, you know, it'll, it'll be added to the bar graph, but it won't be added to the bar graph until 2020.
Understood. Okay. I have another question.
Please.
You know, we talk about income when you make a statement like this, but in fact, some of that income is property taxes, first item.
Correct.
Okay. How are we, and forgive me if I'm asking a question. I'm trying to ask forgiveness, I guess. Just give me information if you need to later, please. But going back to these years that are shown in the bar graph, how, how much was our contribution from property taxes? In other words, was it, did we balance it because we upped the amount in 2017? Or how does that, how are we doing?
We have always operated the community center as a balanced budget. So, basically the same thing that happens in the general fund happens in the community center fund. Um, the, whatever revenues we have from other sources, commodity expenditures first, and then whatever the difference we knows is, that was what we used as the property tax number. I know that this four forty-five number is one of the lowest I've seen since I've been here since 2016. But, um, that is just basically a balancing number. So, whatever the difference is between expenditures and revenues, that's what was put into the property tax number in community center as long as it worked with the overall increase of the rates and the tax levy overall.
I guess related to that, my question would be, or my observation would be, are, are we then, we're, we're attempting to reduce the amount of that through other means and there, there's, I know there's work being done on that. Is that a fair statement?
Correct. That's a fair statement.
Okay, thank you.
See if there's great approval.
If I may add, um, what we've done too in the last, uh, well, really 2019 is we've established this capital improvement fund and in that fund, we have a line item for community center, um, or recreation, I think is what we call it. So, that four hundred, uh, what did we allocate this year? Four hundred and forty-five thousand? Um, you have to actually take what that is plus the four twenty fund allocation to look at what our actual general fund contributions are. So, um, if you just compare it at to what was done in 2016, seventeen, it'll look like a significant decrease in actual expenditures, but it's about the same. It's that, it, it is down a little bit, um, from what it historically has been and we're gonna, we're gonna keep, we're investing in, in a bunch of different things at the community center. One is staff. We're trying to be more efficient. Um, so, we're gonna try to reduce the amount of general fund contributions and increase the amount of services. So, um, that's the goal. Uh, we'll see if, if it works. But, um, I think when we, when we look at it as a whole, if we're comparing it year to year, we gotta make sure we, we put in the capital fund too.
To be clear, the Johnson Controls Bond that we are paying off, is that shown within this particular, uh, the community center budget, the community center fund? Or is that a, a different thing because it's the bond?
It was. So, those are in the numbers of 2016 and seventeen.
I knew they used to be.
But in 2018, we moved them out, um, and then 2019, we moved them out as well. Um, just to clear up what's community center and what's a bond payment. Um, I don't know why it was ever done the previous way, but those are in the 2016 and 2017 numbers.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, so, can I go ahead and, is there, nobody's got anything else for Director Dow? Entertained a motion to receive the 2019 Q1 financial report for the City of La Sueur.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Anyhow, none all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We now move on to line item six Charlie, which is the compensation and classification study, city administrator approval.
Mayor Hank, members of city council, uh, before you is something that we've talked about, we planned for in our capital planning, uh, documents. We, we discussed in great detail at our last personnel and budget committee meeting. Um, Finance Director Dow can give you the rest of the details.
Director Dow.
Thank you very much, Mayor and members of city council. Uh, we'll go over quickly over the compensation and classification study. So, uh, these, that, these type of studies are completed after a company or a city goes over after a reorganization um, and/or if the city has not made any comparisons to any other cities, um, within a desired timeframe. So, that's divided by the city. So, they can be anywhere from three to five years to upwards of ten years depending on what the city is like and how many staff and so on and so forth. Um, so, since this city in, uh, went through a reorganization, we solicited some proposals from Baker Killie and AEM Workforce Solutions in order to get a proposal back. You kind of have a number, um, that we were able to put together with bringing it forward to Personnel and Budget Committee. Um, the completion date of this, um, completion date of the study will be about four months from the start date. So, the sooner they can get started, the sooner we can get this completed. The final report will be, um, reviewed by Personnel Budget and then finally approved by the city council. Uh, we did budget fifty thousand dollars in 2019 for the CIPC and CIPCEP to do this study. Um, we got a proposal from AEM Workforce Solutions to begin with of about thirty thousand dollars. We discussed that at Personnel Budget Committee. Uh, it was decided by Personnel Budget Committee to go back to AEM Workforce Solutions, but see if they can get a better deal. I was able to work out a deal with AEM Workforce Solutions to do twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Um, the Personnel Budget Committee did review the proposal and they are, they are standing behind it. Recommendation tonight would be to approve the proposal from AEM Workforce Solutions to complete the compensation and classification study for twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars.
Any questions for Director Dow regarding compensation classification study?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'm a member of Personnel and Budget as you are, council member of the House. Uh, we talked at length about the possibility of doing this in-house, not having an outside firm come in and do it. Um, it was very clear after an extensive discussion, uh, it's better to contract it out. We have so many things going on with our staff that we felt it was more appropriate that they concentrate on the things that they need to be doing now and that this was a, a very wise approach. And having, um, Director Dow be able to negotiate with AEM and reduce the price uh, was significant and we're very, I think, that was our objective as we met.
Exactly. I'd like to echo that. Uh, we look at our twenty nineteen, twenty twenty goals. We would have been in very big jeopardy of achieving all that if we would have had to use, uh, the staff to go ahead and do this compensation and classification study. It could have been done in-house, but how much time have we willing to split to something of a stature? So, that was the logic behind the Personnel Budget Committee. Any questions?
I do have one other comment. Are we going to ask AEM, are we gonna ask them to compare us to specified towns and cities or cities?
Like sized.
Like sized and so forth, like demographic?
Hold up, hold up. If there's a critical on that question.
Yeah, if I, if I may, um, yeah, there, there will be a comparable cities list that Personnel Budget will, um, develop and talk about similar cities. Like we've, we've said, it's difficult at times to compare the sewer to other cities for a, a town of four thousand plus people. We have a lot of things that go on as the, within the community. Um, I was up in, um, the city administrators conference a couple of weeks ago and talking to cities like Albertville. You know, they have half the staff that we have, but they have, you know, four times as many people, but they don't have an electric fund. They don't have a community center. They basically just, um, they don't have a sewer fund. They're part of that council. So, it's hard to compare, but, um, I'm confident that with input from Zach and myself and AEM and Personnel and Budget, that we can develop a list that, um, the group feels comfortable with.
Yeah. So, not only is it like sized cities, but it's also like amenities between cities. And that's what I think that differentiates the City of La Sueur. There's so many of the other cities that are four thousand people because of the, the enterprise funds that we have here.
Correct. Yeah. So, it makes it, it makes it actually kind of harder to find something because we're kind of a, a one-off city that, you know, have four thousand people. But most four thousand people, population cities don't have an electric fund and a water fund and sewer fund and everything else going on and whatever else, so.
And I think you spoke to this also at the Personnel Budget Committee, that there are actually suburbs that you used to be responsible for that don't even have the various utility funds that a city like La Sueur has to deal with. So, that's the number of people on our payroll.
You got it.
Okay. Any other questions for either our city administrator or finance director?
I got a quick question. How, um, how long would this assessment, what's the lifespan of this before you think you need to do that yet?
It, it's really, it's up to one city council. We have to do what's called a pay equity report every three years. So, the timing of this, it's kind of been in the back of my mind since we, one, did our pay equity report back basically when I first started um, as administrator, that was getting approved. Um, so, we're due for that at the end of 2019. Um, but we, in April of 2018, we went through a pretty extensive reorganization. Now, we worked with Springstad or Baker Killie now is what they're called to make sure that our job descriptions are stored correctly or, or, or are close. And then also we've done what COLA every year. So, we should be pretty competitive as far as, um, where our wages are. Um, but it's really, you know, when you do a, a large scale reorganization, you should probably do this, just kind of a, a check to make sure that we're complying with, uh, those pay equity reporting requirements. So, it, it varies a lot. Now, I'm hoping that the, the organizational structure that we have is pretty close to what it will be in five years. So, potentially it might be five years before we do something like this again. So, it varies.
Anything else? I want to take a motion to approve the proposal for the compensation and classification study from AEM Workforce Solutions for twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much, Director Dow.
Thank you very much.
We now move on to line item six Delta, which is a vacant land purchase agreement with the INH Property Management, city administrator approval.
Mayor Hank, members of city council, this was first brought to city council on the eighth of this year, um, as a, as a concept idea. The direction given to staff was to, to work with INH, uh, property management to develop a purchase agreement. Uh, that same direction was given to, uh, Ms. DiMaggio, the Community Development Director from the EDA. Uh, this purchase agreement that you'll see, um, before you, that's included in the package is for seven point five acres of land. It's related to the potential development adjacent to, to Kingsway Drive. Um, this expenditure, uh, if, if approved, and there's, I'll talk about the process for, um, before it actually gets approved. It's not, we're not gonna, uh, cut a check for the full amount until, uh, a lot of different steps are completed. Um, but we would use funds from our newly formed stormwater utility fund, uh, that's about a year and a half old. And this would, we, we would work on developing the ponds on that seven point five acres. And I'll bring up a figure up at the next slide, so it's more relevant. But, um, potentially using some tax increment financing. Um, but, you know, we, we don't necessarily, probably won't fully develop the site until we need to based on stormwater flows, um, of the area. So, the, the general terms of this are twenty-six thousand dollars per acre, uh, total price, one hundred ninety-five thousand. Now, you'll notice that that original price was in that twenty-five thousand. What we've done, um, working with, uh, INH Property Management is that the legal costs associated with the pre-plating and the plating and the rezoning and all that. We don't, I shouldn't say rezoning, um, because we, our property doesn't. But basically the legal fees associated with this, INH will take care of those or they will do that. So, there's a premium of about seven hundred dollars per acre. So, for the, the city, that's about five thousand dollars. So, we thought that was fair. Um, it really will streamline the process, uh, to not have, you know, multiple legal uh, entities looking at it. Now, we'll have, we'll have our city attorney look at any documents before they're approved by the city council. But the drafting of those and then the development of those, uh, INH group will take care of that. Uh, there is five thousand dollars in earnest money, uh, closing date of potentially September first, 2019. And this whole deal is contingent on all of the subsequent approvals for that apartment complex to basically be ready to be put in. So, um, the, the parcel of all of this, the, the two apartment complexes, those are, those are two five acre parcels. Uh, the one on the south side, um, is the one that would be developed first. Um, and the one on the north wants, the, the idea is that that would be developed after that first one is, um, is full. And keep in mind, the first one, the, the, the first phase will be, uh, market rate apartments. So, what that means is that there's no income requirements, no, um, no subsidized housing in those. So, those are all market rate. I believe there's sixty-five apartments in there. Um, the area on the south end side with the three ponds, uh, south of what the, what new central street would be, that is the seven point five acres that the City of La Sueur would be purchasing via this purchase agreement. Now, the, um, the architect, the landscape architect that drew this, um, you know, threw in some park amenities such as, uh, like a tennis court and some pickleball courts and, and things like that. Those are all concepts. Those are things that we'd have to work through the process to, to include in there. But, you know, the, they, they were having fun with it, I think. So, um, but yeah, basically everything south of Central Street is what the City of La Sueur would be purchasing. The, the seven point, seventeen point five acres that is north of Central Street and, um, west of the apartment complexes, that's what the cit, that's what the EDA will be evaluating on the twentieth to enter a go purchase agreement for.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Just, uh, clarify Jasper, isn't it the one on the north that's being built first? I thought it was, uh, the EDA. They told us it's the market value housing that they're gonna put up first.
I think you're right. I think I missed though. So, it is, uh, whatever, and I'm looking at it right now, the one that is market rate will be built first and then the second one is the, the fifty-five plus. So, um, thank you for that.
Question regarding the seven and a half acres. Are we obligated to put fencing around the three bodies of water as depicted within the picture that we see up here?
We're not obligated to. Uh, we'll look at safety concerns to see if there's some safety concerns. There may be some along, um, you see that triangular one in the, in the southeastern part along the actual, uh, Kingsway Trail. It depends on what the grades are and the slopes are for those. Um, you know, I think in reality, what you see there, uh, it'll look very different than what it actually will be. That's, that's a spillway, um, you know, if, if current history prevails and we continue to have very wet springs and winters and basically it rains all the time, um, you know, there isn't gonna be much, uh, opportunity to put amenities in there like trails. We'll, we'll try to, we'll try to utilize that piece of property to its highest and best use. But its primary use will be for, for stormwater management. And however we need to do that, uh, we will. If, if, there, there may be a fence involved if, if there's, there's, um, a safety concern. Um, so, yeah, basically this is a, a, a three-partner deal between INH Property Management, um, the EDA and the city to develop this, this large thirty-two point five, uh, acre parcel. Um, now, there, there's some of the questions that I've received from EDA members and other members of the public are, you know, I think they would like more information regarding, you know, what the EDA portion of the property will look like because it's more of a wild card as far as, you know, the block sizes and what the road configurations are and things like that. Now, those things will all have to get worked out, um, during the, the pre-plating process. Uh, you know, that'll give the EDA some time to figure out what exactly they want. We have our, our, uh, city engineer looking at road configurations and taking into consideration, um, you know, fire truck traffic and EMT traffic and things like that. So what you see here, you see these double cul-de-sacs. It, it, probably ninety-nine percent chance it won't look like that. This is just strictly concept, so. Um, and you know, the, the process between now and, you know, potentially September first will allow us to develop this. But really what the, what the developer, INH group, wants to do is get moving on these apartments. Um, they wanna be able to have everything secured so they can potentially break ground this fall. So with that, um, the request tonight is a motion authorizing the city to enter into a purchase agreement for vacant property, for vacant land with INH Property Management. That purchase agreement has been attached to the packet and it has been reviewed by uh, legal counsel.
So any questions for our city administrator regarding vacant land purchase agreement with INH Property Management?
I do have one question.
Councilmember.
I may.
Please.
Obviously, if you put a large number of buildings on a site, you have runoff. But it's my understanding that we really need this water retention area, stormwater, even if we didn't build there. Is that, Mr., uh, has the city administrator respond? I think we need to make that clear. We're not just doing these people a favor, it's something we need to all.
Correct. So this, there's a drainage way there, it's been there for years. Uh, the city and the Kings have been talking, Kings and Sundermans have been talking for years about coming up with some sort of solution to this. Uh, drain as way that goes across their property, that they, there's not a, a drainage and utility easement where this is at. So this is really addressing a, a historic, I don't know, I wouldn't call it an issue, but uh, something that we should do as a city, we're really cleaning it up. Um, one thing to keep in mind is that these properties, the two properties that are um, potentially going to be built as apartments, they need to make sure that they abide by all the uh, stormwater regulations. And what the negotiations that, some of the negotiations that'll occur between potentially now and when, when the property closes are, you know, how are they gonna treat their stormwater? How are, what are they gonna do with that? And that might be, you know, put it on our property, use those ponds, maybe develop a pond. Um, you know, those things are all up in the air as far as it, it's concerned. But they will be required to handle their own stormwater. Now I don't know if um, the whole site is required for what we currently have going on there, but at a minimum, there, there's a, there's a drainage way there that we should make sure we have an easement for. Um, another consideration uh, is the EDA property. You know, they're gonna have to treat, you know, that's another input from our, into our stormwater system as well, so. Um, the idea is that that site, we're, we're, we're confident that it can handle the stormwater that's currently there, the stormwater from the apartments and the, and the new development potentially.
Any other questions? Well, unless council objects, I'd like to treat this as two separate actions. And the first action will be, can I get a motion to enter into the attached purchase agreement with INH Properties Management for the seven and a half acres of land for the purpose of stormwater management?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Commander, please. Do we wanted to say stormwater or stormwater or other potential uses? Is this, we're talking about possible other uses, maybe, maybe, maybe. I'm just.
That's probably a good thing to add on there. City Administrator, what's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, it, it, it gives us more flexibility, I think, in the future, you know, five years, ten years down the road, if they look back at this motion, they, you know, for stormwater purposes, it'd be more clear if it's just to, to entering a purchase agreement for the vacant property.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and word that then as a, a motion for the city of La Sure enter, enter, enter into a purchase agreement with INH, uh, INH Property Management for seven and a half acres of land for the purpose of stormwater management, the possible future purpose.
I'll amend my motion if you can, Dan.
Okay. Can we get a second, please?
Yes, I will second that.
Okay, is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. The second motion is the staff is seeking to get some authorization from us as a body, so I'm looking for a motion to uh, allow staff to request authorization to work with INH Property Management on the additional steps related to the pre-plating, final plating and rezoning of the land being purchased.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much, gentlemen. We now move on to line item six Echo, which is our government capital corporation capital lease items approval, city administrative approval.
Mayor Hank, members of the city council, uh, following suit with previous uh, agenda items, we have uh, lease approval requests, and this one is in particulars for fitness equipment that, um, I'm not sure if anybody has seen it yet, but it was installed, there was a grand opening event on, on uh, Friday. Uh, but this is to authorize uh, government capital corporation to pay this invoice. Uh, so there is only one I can voice for this, it's for the remaining, the remainder of the invoiced amount for uh, the fitness equipment from free motion. And the, the action requested is to, um, a motion approving the submission of payment request, of a payment request form to capital or government capital corporation for the fitness equipment from free motion.
Anybody have any questions regarding the invoices for free motion? And the action necessary to go ahead and get this off our docket? Okay. Looking for a recommendation for city council to approve the execution of the payment requesting, request forms attached to this agenda item. If approved, these funds will be disbursed to the vendor from capital, government capital corporation for the amount of one hundred seventeen thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We now move on to line item six Foxtrot, which is the kinetic leasing capital lease items approval, city administrative approval.
Mayor Hank, uh, again, this is a capital lease approval through Kinetic Leasing. Um, as a reminder, Kinetic Leasing are, is the group that's handling uh, the capital equipment purchases uh, that you see for like, uh, well, for example, uh, Towmaster and asphalt hot box trailer. Uh, you might ask what that is, but basically it's a trailer that you can put hot asphalt in um, and keep it hot enough to work it all day long. Um, that'll help with some of our road maintenance that we have. Uh, truck box or service body for one of the, the pickup trucks. And then um, service body accessories for the, the service body of a pickup truck as well. Um, so there, there's three invoices in there, they're all attached in the, in the packet and the action requested is a motion to approve submission of those payment request forms to Kinetic Leasing.
City administrative approval. The Towmaster for thirty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars. You say that's good for one day? Is that all the shelf life that you have for asphalt?
Um, for, as far as storage, yeah, so you can fill that up in the morning, um, and you use that all day long. It uses propane to keep that asphalt warm. Um, what we do right now, we go up, we get one load in the back of our, our dump truck, use it, then we have to go back up. This'll allow us to kind of keep that, move around town, be a little bit more efficient.
Any other questions? I want to take a motion for council to approve the execution of this payment request form of this agenda item. These funds will be disbursed to the vendor for kinetic leasing in the amounts of thirty-eight thousand five, nine hundred fifty-one dollars to Towmaster, fifteen thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents to Crystal Truck Equipment, and nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-five cents to Crystal Truck Equipment with the remainder of the invoice to be paid by CIP and CEP funds.
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We now move on to our comments and court status of appreciation. And let's go ahead and start with uh, councilmember Sullivan tonight, please.
Um, have transit meeting tomorrow at two thirty, two thirty. Um, and MRV meeting tomorrow morning to discuss the, all the licensing that's gonna play on, I think Jasper will probably tell us that a little more. Then I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Henson, you gotta write this down.
Um, uh, well, MRVD tomorrow, as Marvin just mentioned. I do, um, as chairman of the HRA, uh, we made a press release last week uh, due to funding, and if you bear with me, I'm going to share the, part of the press release of the, uh, what we did.
Please do us a fantastic nose for the city of La Sure.
The Housing and Redevelopment Authority, the HRA of La Sure, is proud to announce that they have been selected as recipients of two different grants totaling one point, one million four hundred fourteen thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars. That will allow them to repair their public housing facility, which is Hillside Court Apartments. The Hillside Court Apartments was built in nineteen sixty-nine to provide a safe, sanitary, structurally sound homes for some of those most vulnerable Minnesotaans. In total, the building has forty-eight units, four two-bedroom apartment units and forty-four one-bedroom apartment units. In April two thousand eighteen, local engineers were consulted after HRA staff observed a significant deterioration on the exterior cantilever walkways. They found to be in a desperate need of repair. However, the facility is maintained with a limited number of capital funds through HUD annually. So grants proceed, so grants proceeds may have been the only way for returning these apartments to their once structurally soundness. And on Thursday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, the Minnesota Housing Board of Directors approved the funding for sixteen housing developments, including forty-eight units at Hillside Court Apartments. In total, Minnesota Housing's publicly owned housing program will provide seven, seven point six million dollars in critical repairs reserved for public housing developments around the state. Public housing exists in all of Minnesota's eighty-seven counties. La Sure Housing and the Redevelopment Authority will be receiving eight hundred fourteen thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars from which it will be used to completely remove and replace the aging cantilever walkways. And then, uh, lastly, I'll just mention that in the Housing Redevelopment Authority hopes to begin work on this design and development, this project in the summer of two thousand nineteen, with relocation of its tenants and structure beginning spring of twenty twenty. It's great news.
It's fantastic, gentlemen, I'd like to go ahead and again, uh, on the benefit of all city council members, we're very grateful that uh, not only the HRA board, but our HRA director along with our uh, Community Development Director did such a wonderful job at applying for these grants and allowing the city of La Sure to have this one point four million to take care of so much needed work and to unify that facility. It's gonna be great for all the residents over there. Thank you very much. Uh, councilmember Crawford, please.
Yes, if I may. Jasper, are you going to cover the one twelve turn back? Will you there?
Yeah, I, I can talk to you about the open house.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. A couple of things. First of all, the planning commission was due to meet last week. We were unable to get a quorum, and therefore that meeting was postponed. That's unfortunate. We also had a resignation of one of the members, so we have to find another member in the near future. Secondly, the airport commission will be meeting on the sixth of June. That's coming up rather quickly, when you think about it, so that will be another upcoming meeting. Uh, I want to talk a little bit about local government aid, commonly called LGA. Our city administrator did ask each of us as city council members um, to consider contacting various legislators. Um, uh, we know that this week they're in negotiations, who knows what will happen. But if I remember right, the House bill uh, would give us another about forty-six thousand dollars, whereas the Senate bill would give us about three thousand dollars more next year. And so we want to advocate with the chairpeople of those committees, with the Senate leader, with the House leader, with the governor's staff. Uh, it's, they're still negotiating, Lord knows they'll probably be up all night for the next four nights. But uh, the bottom line is we want to do that, and certainly appreciate anybody that can do that. We've been asked to do that effectively by the League of Minnesota Cities and by the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, so. Anyway, it, just a little heads up. Uh, next thing I have is, uh, I'm gonna make a sort of request, and I'm not gonna be apologetic, but I wish I had said it earlier to the two gentlemen to my right. Uh, but I think it's time for us to have a comp plan update. And with request, we have that somewhere in June, so that we get an idea of where we are with the comp plan. It's a linchpin for what we're doing. So those are all the things that I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Roloff.
Um, I do have a, I do have a, a few things. Um, the, actually first one, I attended the Art Pack meeting, um, actually last Tuesday. Um, and um, we, uh, were in actually discussion a little bit about the signage that will be going up at the community center. Um, there was some actually pushback, um, so we are trying to figure out what to do with the signage on, 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 on how to display it, so it's not, um, so it's not interfering with the signage at the high school. So we're trying to work out that, um, part of it out. Uh, we also got a tour of the community center, um, of the new remodel, um, that happened. So we had a tour of that, um, and, um, and to try to also, so, um, so that was the main actually. And then, um, um, the community center staff did a fantastic job at updating the, updating the actually summer, um, catalog. Um, that, that was, um, um, that is gonna be sent out. Um, um, and maybe some of you have already, yes, yes, yes. Maybe some of you have already actually seen the, um, catalog, but it got a new actually makeover and it, um, it actually, um, and they were able to keep the community center side of it and the education side, uh, the stuff actually separate in the catalog.
Okay.
So that was, so, um, that's my first thing. Um, I heard that the, I heard that the grand opening went, I, I heard that the grand opening went over. The grand opening went very well, um, from, um, from what I have heard from staff and then what I've heard from the, from what, from what I've heard from community members. And then, um, I just want to give a small update on one sixty-nine. Uh, I, um, there was, uh, there was a meeting, um, that took place last month at, um, that happened up in, um, Shakopee. And, um, that was, um, the major part about that meeting was about the construction that's happening. So, um, uh, but some of you that have traveled up that way have noticed, um, kind of were by Chaska to, um, to turn up, to, um, to turn to go to Chaska, um, that's all under construction. And so we had a major update on the road construction that's happening on one-sixty-nine up there. And then my, actually last thing, I, um, I, um, I, um, attended the actually fire department actually pancake breakfast and I, and I heard that it went very well from the, um, um, from the firefighters.
Good question for you, councilmember Roloff. In regards to the construction that's going on on the east side of one-sixty-nine as you're approaching Shakopee or approaching Chaska, are you worried on what that was all about?
Yep, um, the, so the main thing is, um, they're, um, they're trying to eliminate the stoplights. So that, so they're gonna be putting, um, they're gonna be putting a, there's me, a, a, there's me a new, there's me a new actually overpass um, that's being put up right now. And then it's gonna go, and then there'll be a side road off of one-sixty-nine that actually people can take.
Is that what the purpose of that new bridge is that they're putting in?
Yes, yep.
Okay, good to know. And thank you for letting our citizens know what's going on over in the Chaska area on one-sixty-nine. Councilmember Kirby.
Thank you, I'll be rather brief. Um, hospital board meeting, April twenty-third went very well. Uh, met with a lot of the finance and marketing execs from very few, from La Conia. Um, it was a very productive meeting, uh, rather long meeting, but uh, it was good to network with those. Uh, next meeting of the hospital will be May twenty-eighth. And then lastly, a couple of very trivial things, um, as you know, Memorial Day coming up. I believe May twenty-seventh is the nine o'clock celebration in the park. So it's, uh, something I want the community to be well aware of. And, um, lastly, of course, the community center, I have had a chance to go up and, uh, experience the equipment up there. It's a little intimidating at first, but uh, I think once we get used to it, it'll be good. But I, I do enjoy the new paint job up there and the clean look, so it looks real good. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, how about our city clerk, Stacey, do you have anything for us?
No, thank you.
Our city attorney, Johnny, anything?
Just briefly, uh, since our last meeting was three weeks ago, um, I know the EDA um, I know the biodigester Avant Energy had their spring cleanup or wherever they moved the trucks and take out their byproduct, and got a lot of complaints at my office, and I passed some of those on to, to city hall about the noxious odors, uh, the trucks that they have hauling the, hauling well after midnight, essentially hauling twenty-four hours a day, and more importantly, not having proper seals on those trucks, so the roads that they're traveling on, God forbid if you're driving behind one of them, um, the byproducts going all over the road and all over vehicles. Um, I think we need to, you know, this was kind of a hot button issue when this issue was brought before the city years ago, for those of us that were there, um, and I think we need to make some reminders to Avant as to the promises that they made in this room about, uh, that this would not be a public nuisance. Uh, I think if you take a poll of the businesses who are big employers of this city on the south end of town, uh, they were quite upset a few weeks ago, and would tell anyone that was, and I think there, there's also some, um, some confusion as to who you call. Do you call the county? Do you call the state? Do you call the city? Uh, advise people to call the city, and we'll, we'll try and deal with that accordingly, so. Um, it's something that I know that every spring and every fall, we're gonna have this issue, and hopefully it's not as bad as it was two weeks ago, because it was, you couldn't open a window, you didn't want to drive anywhere near it, and it looked, you know, the roadway was blackened with the sludge, uh, which is, which was a promise to the city that that would not be happening, so.
I certainly understand what you're saying. I too received a number of emails and text messages and phone calls regarding the situation, and I got in touch with the city administrator about it. I just want to remind everybody out there what the process is. We have a complaint, uh, format that we use to go ahead and track these, so something like the MMPE biodigester, we actually can get that onto the report that's done for our MRF Puck meetings. We, we keep track of all that, and then Councilmember Croppman's administrative approval being the reps that, uh, attending Avant meetings can certainly bring those things up. But it's important that if you have a complaint and we're there standing odor issues, whether it's our waste treatment facility or the biodigester, make sure you get ahold of the city, make sure that they get a complaint logged, so it's something that we can track. We've reduced that number considerably over the last couple of years, but again, to the point about this last couple of weeks, yes, it was pretty bad up there. And I know that, uh, we have quite a few complaints, so please make sure you take advantage of using the proper format moving forward, so we can get these things addressed. City administrative approval, do you have anything to offer in regards to the Avant situation?
No, um, so the, the process, I'll, I'll maybe correct it a little bit, we've changed it um, right now, so if we get a complaint, either somebody calls me, sends me an email, we go through request tracker, what I do now is MRF Puck doesn't look at these anymore, they were, they were receiving complaints about the facility, so it made sense, but we haven't received a complaint about the wastewater plant for quite some time, uh, which is good. Um, but what I do is I end up, I, if I get a complaint, then I send it on to Avant, um, and I send it on to their point manager and their, the management team, and then I copy Councilmember Croppman on it as well, so he's aware of it, and then we try to find resolution. I know in this certain event, uh, most of the, the tracking and things like that were on county roads outside of the city limits, so the, actually, the, the sewer sheriff's department got involved and they made contact with, um, with the Avant management and talked to them about um, tracking and things like that, and making sure that they're keeping the roadways clean when they're doing it, um. They, there wasn't, they, they weren't able to, I'm not saying that they didn't do this, but they weren't able to locate any unsecured loads or anything like that, um, in the process, but uh, we've seen it happen in town, um, before, so we know it happens, but, yeah, definitely tell us, tell me about it, and then we can, we can add it to what we call the, the odor tracking database that we have and, and go from there.
And that's just a form or, uh, request tracker, you call it?
Yeah, so that's one way of doing it. We actually have a spreadsheet that we just plug all this information in. Um, we try to narrow it down to the, the, the date and the time, so then we can pull in the weather data, so we know which way the wind is blowing and things like that.
Okay, well, before I pass it on over to you, city administrative approval, the community center, I had an opportunity to go up there this past Friday. It's beautiful, but a lot of work, and I, it's nice to see all that nice wonderful equipment and the paint job that's been done and the beautification projects that have, uh, been underway this last month or so. So I'd like to go ahead and, uh, um, let everybody that's been involved with the community center, Allison, Alyssa, and the rest of the staff, Tom Erlich, everybody that's involved, thank you for doing a much needed job and making that place look like, uh, something we can all be very proud of. Uh, I also am proud to say that I had an opportunity over the last three weeks to get together with each of our council members, just to make sure that if there's any additional training we can do, uh, any seminars or anything of that nature that we, if they would like to go, um, that those opportunities are available. We want to try to make sure that we have the best possible city council that we can, and we're always learning. Each one of us is always learning every day. So with that, uh, thank you for all the hard work, and now city administrative, administrative approval, if you'd like to be our hammer police, sir.
Yeah, well, I'll be, I'll be pretty quick. Uh, tomorrow we have a, um, meeting regarding our MPVES permit, which is our wastewater permit at MRF Puck. Uh, we will, soon we'll have a, a permit issued, and this is all part of the negotiations and the contested case and all this, these things that we've done with the PCA and MRF Puck, uh, but we will have a, a permit issued, um, with some pretty favorable terms as far as the permit goes. Um, and, and the MPCA is doing, I think, a really good job of trying to schedule a meeting so that everybody involved can, can learn about the, the permit terms and ask questions and really be, have a little transparent process. Um, also, I think this week I've been, I've been a little, uh, MRF Puck disillusioned update. Uh, we have potentially a call with, uh, the Public Facilities Authority and the Minnesota Management Budget Group, um, along with administration from both LeSueur and Henderson to try to work through some, some, I wouldn't call them issues, but some things, uh, regarding real property declarations that we need to work through before we can actually uh, dissolve according to them. So, we're working on that process. Uh, we have a personnel and budget committee meeting on Thursday. Uh, we're gonna be talking a little bit about kind of setting the table for the comp and class study regarding, you know, what the schedule looks like for that, the touch points of personnel and budget, and then also we're gonna look at, um, the organizational structure and see if there's anything we want to fine tune before this comp and class study, um, to make sure that that's all incorporated into that study, so we don't have to ever hopefully come back and, and make any adjustments. Uh, we finally have a charter commission meeting scheduled for May twentieth, which is Monday, six o'clock. This will be the first meeting that we have, that we, um, we should have a full group, um, since it changed from fifteen members to nine. So, um, I've been getting some calls about getting this scheduled, and really what we're gonna work on is coming up with a, with a, uh, a work plan for future charter commission meetings. Um, so that meeting is held at six o'clock on Monday down here in city council chambers. It's open to the public, we noticed it, um, anybody can, can get involved with it, and um, for people that don't know, the charter commission is kind of the, uh, the gatekeeper of the city of LeSueur's constitution, um, we kind of call it that. Uh, but they, they really kind of make sure that it's relevant, uh, legal is involved with making sure if there's any, uh, things that need to be changed, that are changed legislatively, we incorporate it into our charter. Um, and it's a fairly new group, um, it was kind of rebooted in two thousand and fourteen, so it's a good group and we have some, some good members on it. Um, next thing is that there will be a open house for the trunk highway one twelve turnback project. Uh, this will be held, uh, on June fourth at four P M. It'll be kind of an open house style. Uh, there will be some, um, you know, bulletin board, boards that you can go in, there'll be a TV monitor there. But really, it's to just ask questions, have another touch point with people along the project. Um, anybody that's directly adjacent or within, actually, within three hundred and fifty feet of the property uh, should receive notice, a postcard inviting them to the meeting itself. Uh, we're gonna do some marketing on our website and, um, on basically social media, and make sure that people are, are invited and they can ask questions about it. It's, it's time for an update. Um, moving forward though, you'll start seeing some more official, uh, meetings, open houses related to the four twenty-nine process, chapter four twenty-nine, um, regarding special assessments on the project, so. Um, that will kind of run in parallel together. It's important that the, that the entire community understands what's going on, because this is four miles of road that are going through the city that it's gonna disrupt things. I mean, there's no, there's no doubt about it, it's gonna be disruptful. So it's important that everybody understands it, but there, there's another parallel process regarding special assessments that we have to follow statutorily that we'll be doing as well. Um, again, that's June fourth at the fire hall, uh, four P M. Uh, and then, as a note, um, Memorial Day, the twenty-seventh, uh, is a normal council meeting. We have that, that rescheduled for the twenty-eighth on a Tuesday, so. Uh, we've noticed that upstairs, that's the process. I've gotten that question a couple times, how do you reschedule a meeting? Um, you know, typically, what we do is we have it in charter, it's the second and fourth Mondays. If we ever want to reschedule it, we, it doesn't tell us exactly what to do, but we generally give at least a month's notice. We publish it on our, on our bulletin board upstairs, so, uh, that's all I have.
Okay, let me just review my notes here real quick. Do we have any existing, uh, uh, resumes or applications, uh, in the queue for the planning commission, uh, vacancy?
I'll have to look, I believe there may be one that's in there, so. Um, and the process with that is if there's one in there, then we reach out to that individual and see if they're still interested. If they are, then we'll, we'll put it in the queue, so. But yeah, that's something that I think, um, Samantha DiMaggio is gonna be looking at here this week.
Well, we, well, we have the opportunity, I'd like to encourage everybody in the city of LeSueur, if you want to get involved with local government at some level, please, uh, think about, uh, putting in your application so that when we have it in, uh, one of these boards, commissions, or committee openings, we can go ahead and plug you right on in and, uh, get you some experience real quick, so it'd be very much appreciated. With that, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for a treatment, please.
Some moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Gentlemen, thanks.